We're going to start a little differently. I'm going to, before I hit the gavel here to start the meeting, I'm going to ask Commissioner Winters to give the invocation and please remain seated, and he's going to have a few words to say.
I ask that you remain seated because this may take awhile. You'll be standing up. This is Christmas time. This is a time of celebration. This is a time that we sing Christmas carols and we spend time with the family. I spent all day yesterday with the family at the church. But our associate pastor yesterday presented a great message that I want to share with you. That message was tidings of comfort and joy. Tidings of comfort and joy. We hadn't have a definition of what tidings was. Anybody know song tidings of comfort and joy? God rest you, Mary gentlemen, but nothing you dismay. Remember Christ, our Savior, was born on Christmas Day to save us all from Satan's power lest we should go astray. Great tidings, comfort and joy. It was written by a man, there was a great man named Watts. And as in that era, people did not have bibles or could not read a bible if they had any of them. So they would make Christmas carols to get the message of Christmas people, the message of Christ to people. What is tidings? Tidings is good news. It's news of comfort and joy. Now, this comfort word was tossed in the middle, comfort and joy. We know joy to the world, understand joy to the world, but the Christ child came for more than just us to be happy and have joy. Came to be a comforter to us. Isaiah 61 says that Isaiah the prophet was anointed to preach the good news of tidings, to present this. I've come to and anointed to preach the good news unto the meek, to bind up the brokenhearted, to bring liberty to the captive and open the prisons to those that are bound, and to proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord. Six hundred years after this prophecy, Jesus was standing in the temple, and he began to say that that anointing was upon him, and all that Isaiah said, he presented. And he said, "This day has that prophecy been fulfilled." That's comfort and joy. I just left one of my best friends who's lost his sister today while people are rejoicing at Christmas. He's placing his sister in the ground. What's the beauty of Christmas is for us that know this Christ of the New Testament that said, "This day is it fulfilled," and your hearing was that he brings comfort as well as joy. You all know my story. My wife gets her leg broken. Church in the middle of worship. Gentleman falls on her leg, breaks her leg in two places. We've had eight weeks, nine weeks of an immobile leg, and we've had the comfort that Christmas is all about through those eight weeks. We've had comfort and we've had joyful time. And that's what this season is about. That's why I've asked that we, this is not formal commission proceedings, but the joy of Christmas, we all want to sing, but the joy of Christmas is what gets us to that joy. The actual comfort that Christ brings to us brings that joy. And I hope for you and your family, we don't know what New Year's holds for us. I'll tell you what it's like. Many of us know what it's like to be seventy and older. We know what it's like when our body starts to tell us stories we've never heard before, but we don't know what tomorrow holds, but we know where our comfort, we know where our joy. Let's pray. Father, we come together as people on a cause, as people on a mission, but today, as we take this moment, we're just who we are, men, women, the commission, that know the comfort that we have needed over the years. But we thank you for that comfort. We thank you for that joy. Joy of our children being around us, around the Christmas tree is joyful. You bring that joy to us because it's Christmas. The Lord, when we go by the tough things of life and we spend our days in the tough things of life, we thank you that the Christ child is with us, that he's no longer the Christ child cooing as little Remi is over there, but now he's the King of kings, the Lord of lords, and the peace giver and the peacemaker in the troubled times. Pray for every man and woman that's represented here, and as we go forward in the new year, give us that comfort we need. Give us that peace we need. Give us that joy we need. In your name we pray. Amen.
Call the order. The Bradley County Commission Voting Session, December the nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. If will please stand, Commissioner Blake will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Here.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Alford.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Here.
Slater. It's thirteen present and one absent.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the Chamber of Commerce head man there, Mike Griffith. Thank you for coming. And there's another, there's been another great thing happen this week. I think someone turned twenty-nine on the commission. Commissioner Tim Mason had a birthday. Thank you very, thank you very much. I entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Don't move.
Second. Commissioner Thompson, second Commissioner Goins was the one that made the motion. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
We will now go to our county mayor, Mayor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. I have a couple of things, three things for you. First of all, Renee Samples is with us today, our finance director. We've received the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to Bradley County for its annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June thirtieth of twenty-one. This is last year's report. The report's been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards, which includes demonstrating a spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate the financial story and motivate potential users and groups to read the report. This certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. And of course, the big thing to me is this is the seventeenth year in a row that we've received this award. So I'd like to call on Renee to come forward to receive the award, please.
Seventeen years in a row. That's quite an accomplishment.
Seventeen years in a row, and I almost made a mistake. Anybody that knows Renee, I don't usually offer her a microphone, give her the opportunity to speak. Congratulations, Renee. We appreciate it. Somebody asked if we've received the audit back yet, and no, we expect it any day now, usually between now and Christmas. It'll come, so it should be here soon. Commissioner, if you take one and pass it around, I've got two things that are not on the agenda that I would ask for you to approve today. While this one's coming around, I'll explain it. You know, school people have been talking to some of you for some time now about an addition they're trying to do at Bradley High School. I think they call it a science wing. We've come up with a grant, a FEMA grant, to do sort of like we did at Walker Valley a few years ago, where we can do the addition and it be funded mostly with federal money. So what this resolution is, the gist of it is the estimated cost of this addition is ten million sixty-five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. And we have to be on record approving, applying for the grant and our match, which is ten percent. It's a ninety-ten grant. So ten percent, what you're committing to in this resolution is a million six thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars. So when that project, if it's approved, and we're confident it will be approved, and they get started on the project, you'll have a million dollar commitment in a ten million dollar project. If someone would put that on the agenda, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd carry it. Commissioner Hughes, put it on. Do we need to go ahead and make a motion to vote? Is that, you're making a motion? Okay. Do I have a second? Commissioner Thompson.
Any questions? Anything I need to explain?
Yeah. This, yes, go ahead.
Recognize me? Yeah. I'm sorry. Mayor, um, this is the first we've seen of this. You did mention that they were going after grant money, but I guess here in paragraph, the county legislative body commits to funding the non-federal grant share in the amount of one million, which is the ten percent you just referred to. This, in past, we've worked with the school board on their fund balance. If they have a certain amount in their fund balance, we'd like for them to use that. Is this, when it says county legislative body, that's us. Is there any way to change the language so that we can negotiate that at a later date?
You can still negotiate that. This is technically a Bradley County grant. We have to do the application and we have to say that if we're approved, we're agreeing to match it. The discussion is between you and the school board then, who actually writes the check can be had at a later time. But we're telling the federal government that we will match the grant, we Bradley County. Whatever subdivision of Bradley County actually writes the check then could come later.
And I guess, what is the deadline for us letting the federal government know that we're committing to this?
According to schools, it's in the next few days, right?
I know they asked, they wanted us to actually sign it last week, but because of the way the language reads, that tracks what the mayor is certifying by signing the grant. So that's the reason why we're asking for you all to approve it. My understanding from them is that they needed it from us ASAP in order to submit the grant to FEMA, which has to approve it, and then it goes through the process.
This is that grant about the safety room and all that?
Yes.
Yeah, we'd heard about it, but I would really like for us to, give us more time for this kind of stuff. I mean, I'm for the science wing. I have been since the day it was talked about, but there are revenue constraints that we're going to have this spring when we get into the budget. So you commit to a million dollars here, you're spending money that you're going to have to say, I promise you, you're going to have to say no to, and I don't want to be a downer. I swear I don't. But Mayor, I think you would agree, when you commit to this, it's a done deal, and you're, I promise, you're going to have to say no to some things you don't want to say no to. So just, I wish that we had more time. That's all.
Anyone else have any comments? Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I carried this because I'd watched the school board meeting and listened in, and it sounded like it was on a timely manner whenever, what I could tell from the meeting itself. I understand and agree with you, and it will put some stress on us in other areas. However, it is a good, it's something that will be good for the community.
I just, I just want to add.
Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree with that. I'm going to vote for this. I'm going to go, I just want everybody to know, my thirteen fellow commissioners and Mayor, I promise you're going to have to make tough decisions. Anytime, and I've been consistent on it, that we can get into a ninety-ten deal or even an eighty-twenty deal, and it's over a million dollars, it's pennies on the dollar. It makes sense to do that. This makes sense. I just want to let you know, if we had more time, we could work with some things on the budget coming up here in the spring of twenty-three. I didn't want to sound like a downer, but I just, I've been through this eight budgets, and I know what's getting ready to happen. But it's a ninety-ten and a ten million dollar project, and it's common sense to commit this million dollars. Sorry, I just want to say that, Mayor.
Anyone else?
There's no need to add anything to it. It was going to occur, and so instead of ten million dollar bonds, I'm asking you to commit to ten percent of those ten million dollar bonds. I'm thankful that we can get the grant if we get it approved. They were already working the votes, and you all know that. They were going to get the addition, but Bradley County is going to be stuck with ten million dollar bonds if we end up coming up with this grant. So I threw a monkey wrench in there and said, offered a grant, and they're willing to go with it. But you do have to commit before they approve the grant, the ten percent. You can discuss that with the schools. They may be willing to put up the one million. I couldn't get them to say so, but plus Bradley County is what the commitment's coming from in order to get it. And again, it'll be an addition about like at Walker Valley. Those are safe rooms at Walker Valley. From the community standpoint, we'll have safe rooms on the north side. We've got them on the northwest, the east, the southeast, and now we'll have one on the south side also. So community rooms is a big thing, a big benefit to the community.
I think also one of the benefits, if we had to go for a bond issue for the science wing, that means we would split it with the city. And instead of ten million dollars, it'd be approximately fifteen million dollars, and this sounds like a great alternative. Any more comments? Yes, Commissioner Gilbert.
Mr. Blake, Commissioner Blake, I appreciate what you do for this commission, and all your input that you give us is appreciated. I want you to know that. And you're going to agree on this, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, Mayor is right. I mean, if we had to issue a bond, I don't know if it'd be all ten million, but even if it's not, we would obviously have our obligation to the city. So money-wise, I do this every single day and twice on Sunday. Just know that it comes at a cost. It's going to be a million dollars out of one of our fund balances, and we're going to have to, it's going to be a tight budget come spring. So the answer to your question, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, a question for Ms. Freiberg. With this language in here, how it is, where it says that the Bradley County Legislative Body commits to this, if we approve this measure, is there any going to the schools and asking them to pay for the full amount or half of it, or how would that work? Because I mean, the language states that we're committing to pay for this.
You certainly can do that, and there's nothing that would prohibit you from doing it, but I am reading from the grant application, which is in the name of Bradley County. And in order for the mayor to sign this, and the reason why that language says what it says, is the undersigned, the undersigned, which is the mayor in this case, assures the fulfillment of all requirements of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. He also then goes on to say, "The governing body of the applicant," which of course is you all, "has duly authorized the document," here we go, "commits to the non-federal share identified in the scope work budget," which is that number we're talking about, "and hereby applies for the assistance documented in this application." "The applicant understands that this project may proceed only after FEMA grant approval." So in order for him to sign this document, which is time-sensitive based on my understanding, you all have to commit as the applicant to say, "We will fund that million dollars." Now, you certainly could go to the schools after that, but in order for us to apply, this body would have to say, "Somebody from Bradley County is going to pay this money."
One further, one follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, due to this being a FEMA grant and it being a safe room, would any of this follow or be able to go underneath American Rescue Plan funds? Where I know that we're getting short on those American Rescue Plan funds, but I know there's, we've talked about in the past, I've heard you say that there are funds where we can use those to kind of spend for what we would like to choose for, even if it was, you know, half a million dollars goes towards it and the county pays the rest of the bill. But just to be able to cut down on some of the million dollars so we could be able to fund other things in the following budget.
When it comes time to pay the million dollars, if you so choose to pay it out of ARP, it probably would qualify. There's two things. The tight budget is called the general fund. Capital Projects Fund has three million dollars in it. It's called long-range planning. So there is a million dollar setting in capital projects. More than likely, the three million would have been used to build this addition anyway, and then we'd have borrowed the other seven million. So if this gets approved, we take one million out of the three, and we have no additional debt. The simplest things require the most discussions, it seems like. This is a million dollars that we pay upfront and no debt versus ten million dollars of debt or possibly three out of cash and seven in debt is how it would have worked the other way. But back to your question, when it comes time to pay it, if you want to do it out of ARP, you'd be moving money from water to a school project, it probably would qualify, yes.
Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yeah.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Goins.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Appreciate it. This next one didn't come before anyone recently either, but if you look in your budget, it is budgeted. This is to put the lights on one of the ballparks. It's in the budget. It came in actually twenty dollars less than is budgeted, I believe. This just authorizes me to sign the contract to get those lights installed.
I'll take it. I'll make that motion. Commissioner Winters makes the motion. Do I have a second? Second is Commissioner Thompson. Discussion. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Goins.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We, kids or students, hopefully will appreciate that new science wing, and the taxpayers certainly should appreciate it. Next is the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Hughes, Commissioner Thompson, discussion, please. This is the consent agenda. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Goins.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Next is reports from committees and our districts. We'll start on the left with Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This past Saturday, I had the great opportunity to attend the local Home Builders Association Installation Banquet and Christmas Party. I enjoyed seeing Commissioner Blake there and participating in that, and want to say congratulations to the new twenty-twenty-three president of the Ocoee Region Builders Association, Dustin Wong of Riverstone Construction. If you don't know Dustin, Dustin has made it his mission and goal in life to really promote affordable housing, not only here in Bradley County, but also in Hamilton County as well. And I know Dustin will do a great job for the local building industry and help continue to work on pushing local builders to build affordable housing in Bradley County. Also, Mr. Chairman, if you would, please put on the calendar on December twenty-ninth here in the commission room at noon. We will have a recreation ad hoc committee at that time.
Thank you very much. Before I go to the next person, I've been asked to add that the south side appreciates the safe room. So everyone appreciates a safe room. Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'll start off with, of course, you've already heard from the chairman, Tim, my partner's birthday was Saturday. He was the old fifty-four years old. I can't hardly remember back that far, but anyway, also went to a city council meeting last Monday. I don't know if you've ever been to a city council meeting, but I encourage each one of you to go to one. It's quite, quite something to see. I mean, they conduct business basically the same way we do. And the HCI committee, we went last week. I can't remember which day, me and Lori and Lisa Stensberry and reviewed or signed off on the Boys Club grant. They have a nice basketball court there, and it goes also for a pickleball court. You can play pickleball there. They have a nice deck and a pavilion there. They built it really nice. I'm glad we were able to spend the HCI money. This was last year's HCI money. We just went and signed off on it, but everything was great there. It looked really, really good. Those folks are really good over at the Boys Club, Boys and Girls Club, sorry. And I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Goins. I'm sorry, Commissioner Mason. I don't want to overlook the birthday, man.
Thank you, Chairman. Two, three things today. Had a few constituents call me over the weekend from Leadmine Valley Road saying, "Please don't forget about their water and maybe some fire hydrants." I told them I would bring it up. Maybe after the first year, we can relook at some of these properties from HCI. Also, I want to give a report on our TDOT litter grant. Been very busy for the month of November, and I'm behind and sorry. I'm about a week out from getting the report to you, but we cleaned four hundred and fifty-two county road miles, one hundred and eighty state road miles, and seventy-five city road miles for a total of thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty pounds of litter. Also, total of nineteen hundred and eighty-five pounds of recycled materials throughout the month. And as always, I want to thank Missy Harrison and Thomas Bell for their continued support as we carry this grant on through the next year. And we want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, six district constituents, and everybody in Bradley County, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. That's all I have. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Goins.
Four sidewalk, then wild wood. That's all I have.
Great. We'll eventually get those sidewalks finished. Commissioner Thompson.
Two, three things here. Commissioner Winters, I appreciate the speech you made there this morning. Good time, good season for it. Another thing too, you don't get too close to that city council because they'll have that handout, want some money. I need to pass that on. The next thing, January the ninth is our next meeting, and we're going to ask that the building and land will meet at ten-thirty at the Archives Building, Kirk Street, and we'll have a building and land committee meeting there because we're going to go over the sprinkler system and anything else that needs to be brought up at the building and land. So we'd like to have that at ten-thirty. It'll be early in the morning, but that should get us back here in time for a meeting on the ninth at twelve o'clock. And I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Gilbert.
I had a little lady come into the bakery and brought me a letter the other day, and on her letter, it explained to me about how her and her husband had worked all their lives and got to be able to retire, and then all of a sudden, her house that she owns is over thirty years old, and some problems came along, and they had quite a few renovations they had to make done. And she said she just had septic put in about four months ago. And she wished she could have made this could have made it to where she could have got on the septic issues or the septic funds. But a lot of people don't understand what the septic fund is about. It is not, it's not to hand people out money just to hand money out. What this is for is to actually keep your septic system from polluting the water system. And the water system, that is why T-Deck has come along and, and put this money out. They're trying to clean up sewer systems to where it don't leach out into the water. But I also understand it feels like that we are up here kind of handing money out, and we're not. But to the little lady, I thank you for the prayers that you give me. This is not over. It's not done yet. Final phase not done. I'm going to keep working on trying to do something for you. And if I can, I've not figured it out yet, and I'm going to work with some commissioners and see if we can. There's three or four people that's asked me this, that within the last year, that this money has come out for sewer, that has asked me, "Hey, I just got mine done. Is there any way I can get something back?" And her husband's actually had to go back to work. And I love you, and I thank you, and I care for you, and I appreciate you coming to me the way that you did. And I just want to say Merry Christmas to everybody out in the county, Happy New Year. And Jesus is the reason for this season. He is the one that actually, who we celebrate. And I just thank everybody, all the commissioners for what you do for everybody. And just love each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Winters.
Merry Christmas from the Seventh District. It's gone very smoothly. We have sixty highway that'll be a great gift for us in a few years once it's finished, but it's, it's been a good year for us in the Seventh District. Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins?
I want to echo that from Commissioner Winters and joining with Commissioner Blake and wishing the third a Merry Christmas. And also, Commissioner Slater, we miss her. I'm sure she's tuned in, watching this from, from the boat or the deck or wherever she is around the world. So we, we miss her and wish her nothing but the best. I do want to share something that I appreciate Commissioner Blake sharing with me this past week. There is a public symposium that's actually going on right now. There are two opportunities. It's a virtual Zoom meeting. I'm going to pu- I'm going to push that link out in the comments of our Facebook meeting today. So I'll, I'll get that sent out quickly, and that is in regards to the Michigan Avenue and Dry Valley Road area. There's a website survey that's also attached to it for our citizens to, to comment on safety issues that are going on in that specific area. So I'll, I'll push that link out so people can join. The lunchtime is happening right now from twelve to one thirty, and tonight's will actually happen from five to six thirty. So I would encourage anyone that's interested, jump on board that and, and take a listen. I'll be, I'll be joining in tonight. And I appreciate Commissioner Blake sharing that. So Merry Christmas to all, Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo Commissioner Collins on that, that Zoom call that's going on right now, and the one later for, you know, that's in the Third District there, and that area right there is growing leaps and bounds. Congestion, people left and right, taking their lives in their hands sometimes. I'm being facetious, but the, the people who are in the decision-making need to hear from those folks out there this evening. Your input is valuable. Next, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to congratulate a young lady, Jalen, I hope I get her last name correctly, Dolph A. She set a new school record in the two hundred IM at the Ray Barcer Invitational in Knoxville at the Allen Jones Aquatic Center. This is the sixth time that she has set a record. So congratulations to her on that achievement. Next, Mr. Chairman, as you know, usually the Finance Committee meets on the first Monday, but the first Monday coming up is January second, so we will not meet on January second. I'm going to ask that the Finance Committee come together and meet on January the ninth, right after our work session. So ten, fifteen minutes after you conclude the work session, then the Finance Committee will start its business here in the commission room on January ninth. Last, I'd like to wish everybody a safe and happy Merry Christmas and New Year. We'll see you next year.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Alford?
Second district's doing well. I'm just glad to hear that we're moving forward on this science wing and, and safe room at Bradley because that's something been and needed for a long time. So I'm glad to see that's coming about. Hopefully, we can get that FEMA grant. Merry Christmas to everybody and a Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Beatty. Um, Commissioner Hughes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report today, other than to wish everyone a happy, her a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
That's great. Commissioner Beatty?
Everything's doing good in the First District. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
That is great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I told you. Mayor, if I may, on this grant, does it say when they will let us know? And the reason I ask is because obviously the three that you talked about, and if it was not to go, then we no, whereas we can't go use that money until we know that we have it. So I just wondered if there's a timeline of when they're going to let us know that we're go. You understand why I'm asking?
I don't think it said when they would announce. These grants don't come out and have deadlines. They just have, you got to get them in by a certain time, and then they just sporadically announce. I honestly don't know, but I would assume it'd be way before budget, if that's what you're referring to.
In other words, I mean, we can't touch that three million you referred to until we know for a fact that we got it.
Well, hopefully, we're not going to spend two more million dollars out of that
You know why I'm asking?
Budget anyway, but yeah, but we should know before then.
Thank you very much. I'm not aware of any unfinished business that we have. Approval of the agenda is the next item. I'm looking for Commissioner Thompson. And Commissioner Winters will be the second, then you open for discussion. Go ahead, sir.
Chairman, I'd like to, your permission to move item item C item C to item A due to a funeral I'll be needing to attend at about ten fifteen.
It is so approved. Item A, Commissioner Winters.
Uh, last week, the mayor brought to us our attention a resolution authorizing the dissolution.
We need to vote on the approval of the agenda.
Oh, let's back up. Any, any more discussion?
I'm, I'm dumping the gun.
Call the roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Goins?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent. Okay.
Now, Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My apologies. The agenda item that I'm presenting is, last week, the mayor brought to us a resolution authorizing the dissolution of the Candace Creek Sanitation District. Proving this resolution will allow the transfer of property to the Cleveland Utilities as part of the city's plan to construct a park on Candace Lane. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this resolution.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Goins is the second. Open for discussion? No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
I guess.
Goins?
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Okay, agenda item, now it would be B, that would be Commissioner Tommy Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution on pages twenty-two and twenty-three of the agenda appropriating fifteen thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the six eight six rake straw road water project in Bradley County to Cleveland Utilities as allowed by the conditions and terms of the American Rescue Plan Act from the funds allocated by Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty and authorizing the Bradley County Mayor to execute an agreement with Cleveland Utilities regarding said appropriations. I'd like to make that as a motion.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Mason is the second. Open for discussion? No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Goins?
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Now we go to the new agenda item C, formerly B, Commissioner Daniel Beatty.
I moved, we passed this resolution appropriating nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for the four fifteen Moore Circle Water Project in Bradley to Cleveland Utilities as allowed by the conditions and terms of America Rescue Plan Act from the funds allotted by the Resolution two thousand twenty-one fifty authorizing the Bradley County Mayor to execute an agreement with Cleveland Utilities regarding the said appropriations.
Second. Commissioner Winters has seconded the motion. Commissioner Beatty made the motion. Open for discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Goins?
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor, none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item D, Commissioner Mike Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, item D is a resolution found on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine of your agenda packet, amending the Bradley County Plan previously established by Resolution twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-one fifty to allocate funds to essential workers, premium pay, broadband, public water, sewer, COVID response, and affordable housing as allowed by the terms and conditions of the American Rescue Plan Act. I place this resolution in the form of a motion.
Do I have a second? Second on Commissioner Goins.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interject, coming around is a new page two for this resolution. Three of the Section Four, Section Five, and Section Six had the wrong numbers, so we've corrected those numbers. So you have a new page two, but the resolution, other than that, is the same thing.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hughes was the one that made the motion. Commissioner Goins was the one that seconded the motion. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters? He's gone. Okay, sorry. Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Goins?
Yes.
It's twelve in favor, none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you very much. Agenda item E, Commissioner Mike Hughes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item E, a resolution allocating an additional two million dollars for COVID response for government services pursuant to the amend plan established in Resolution twenty twenty-two, as we found out, as part of the standard allowance option elected for Bradley County in Resolution twenty twenty-two sixteen to spend American Rescue Plan Act funds on government services consistent with the United States Department of Treasury final rule for loss of res- her revenue. I place this form of motion.
The motion made by Commissioner Hughes. Do I have a second? Commissioner Mason made the second. Open for discussion, please. Call the roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Goins?
Yes.
It's twelve in favor, none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you very much. Next item is communication from the audience. Anyone, yes, please. You, you know the routine, five, five minutes.
Ms. Gleason, I apologize. I just couldn't hear you.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? Hello?
I can hear you.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I had planned to say something about this at the last commissioner meeting, but I really need to think more about what I wanted to say and to actually pray about what I wanted to say. At the Monday, December fifth, two thousand twenty-two commissioner meeting, I was taken back by the response of a certain commissioner in regard to a statement by an upstanding woman and young mother of five beautiful children, a resident of Bradley County in District Four, who spoke of the failure of her commissioners returning her phone calls or responding to her emails. The response by the commissioners seemed to me to come across as chauvinistic and rude. However, what was even more disconcerting was the laughter that broke out from several of the other commissioners. I've tried to step back and understand such a response from the commissioners toward the young woman. I truly can't wrap my brain around it. Maybe it was a nervous laugh on their part. Maybe they didn't understand what was said and how it was said. Maybe I didn't. I'm certainly not their judge, and I can't know for sure of their intentions or frame of mind. I've heard that there have been literally criminals who have held the position of Bradley County Commissioner in the past. If a criminal has repented and changed their ways, I could almost be comfortable with them serving on this commission depending on their heart toward the people whom they serve. However, in my opinion, this woman deserves a public apology, at the very least. At the most, the commissioner who acted in this manner toward an upstanding resident of this community should be removed from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the audience? Anyone want to speak? Make a public speak. Thank you. Announcements, we have the recreational planning ad hoc committee noon on December the twenty-ninth. January the ninth at ten thirty at the Archives Building, Building and Lands Committee will meet January the ninth. After the meeting, the Finance Committee will meet. Those are the